Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our work session for November 18th, 2021. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and I thank you all for being here. At this time, we have our fall policy update and our first reading. And I'm going to turn it over to our superintendent, Dr. Matthew Luce.
Good afternoon. We received a very thick packet of policies for the fall update. And we actually bring half to the board tonight for review. And then we'll bring another half in December for the first reading of that. There was a lot on these, and there were some topics here that I think are going to generate some pretty robust conversation, and some that aren't. So let's go ahead and get started with parental involvement. All this is, it's required, and it deletes one word, replaces it. And this speaks to the Title I Parent Policy. School safety. There are updates, the language of temporary requirements to prevent COVID-19 spread. Section reflect current public health recommendations. And so this is modifying temporary rules. And this is about enforcement. This is not enforced, it's about implementation. These are recommended, and they do fall in line with... They're trying to just add clarifying language in that first paragraph.
Are we able to change any wording on these? Or would we have to adopt them as they're worded?
So go ahead a little bit for...
Well, that word "implement," will we change that to "consider"?
So when... I'm going to go back to when Union County voted to work outside of the COVID guidelines, Mandy Cohen immediately paid a visit to Union County, saying that these were to be followed. So if we said "consider," we can push this up the chain of deal if we need to. That would be my interpretation of...
Well, the next part...
The sense of thumbs from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. Won't we have to implement those?
We do. So consider, there's, we either implement them, or we... Consideration means it's an option.
Well, the next part in REDD said, "when it's advised to be implemented." It doesn't say that they're telling us it has to be implemented.
So...
I'll get my hand around it for the next meeting.
This comes down to also the six feet distancing versus three feet versus a mask versus unmasked. So they're advising, they give us the options about what we're going to do.
Right. So that's why I wondered if we could just consider what they're advising versus we're automatically going to implement everything they suggest. Just a thought for the next meeting.
They do say "recommended" rather than "required."
Yeah.
These temporary rules shall remain in effect until repealed by the board or until applicable guidance from DHS. So it's basically following the guidance and the rules versus... They're moving words around.
And we have to discuss this basically at every meeting right now because we have to vote on the mask mandate every month.
That is correct. That's what we're doing every month.
So I guess that's kind of, I think what she, I would say, is trying to say is we're considering every part of it every month, basically, right? Some aspects of it? With, you know, when we talk about it and what we're going to do and...
Yeah, but isn't the 10-day quarantine, I mean, that's one of the things that they're talking about here. So we don't have that option, is that correct? We have to follow that 10-day quarantine.
So that's something not recommended, that's required.
It's required.
Right. But this talks about things that are recommended. Anyway, it's okay, go on to the next meeting.
Well, we can go back to it because this is just first reading. So we can run it through, we can have a second reading, we can put it on the agenda, have further discussion, decide if we want to adopt those or not. And we can also check regarding that word, why this is worded this way.
My thoughts are, you know, we may not need to implement what they're implementing in the western part of the county if they're dealing with high numbers there. And we're low numbers here. You know, I don't want us to have to impose things that we don't have to, you know, that's not necessary for the safety and health of their children.
I agree. Seventeen twenty, Title IX, nondiscrimination on the basis of sex. This language is strongly recommended and updates and... This comes from several cases, one of which is gender use in the bathroom. So that's the Grimm versus Gloucester County School Board, where the Fourth Circuit ruled that based on gender identity regarding in bathroom usage and how that applies. We have put guidelines and framework in place around that very question. Virginia and the counselors put together a presentation about with all the secondary schools in the county and then walked through that with them. I would say this, so there is, there is a process, and if a student identifies a gender other than what they may have on their birth certificate, there is a process that is followed to access changed names, access restrooms, and so on.
And parents are involved in that?
Parents must, there is parent involvement in that as well. And it is not something that you would change up on a daily basis. Like you, there's a process through, and there is a discussion and guidance involved. Virginia, would you be okay to speak to any of that at this point?
Sure. So based on, first of all, based on age, there, it may or may not be parent involvement. But in a lot of cases, there is parent involvement. There definitely has to be parent involvement when we go into Power School and change the name. But, and there has, there's a process of parent involvement and counseling before it's changed in Power School. And if we, if the students move forward and have their name changed in Power School and have a preferred name listed, then they can change that one time a year. So in other words, if somebody is exploring their identity, they can't say, "This week I want to be this name, and next week I want to be this name, and then let me try out something different." There's serious and careful consideration for that.
And what's the age limit?
For...
When you get the parent involved, what age?
What age is it if they can do it without parent involvement?
Sixteen, but we try to encourage parent involvement.
I'm a little confused as to being able to change their name every year if it's not a legal birth certificate?
It's a preferred name. It's not, it does not change their legal name.
Okay.
So there would be things that appear out of Power School as their preferred name, but their transcripts would still be their legal name.
And how is this going to affect bathrooms, locker rooms?
So we can offer alternate opportunities, alternate bathrooms, alternate places to change clothes and things like that. But if the student insists that they want to use the restroom of the gender they identify with, then we have to let them do that. Is that federal law?
The case rule appeals to the force held at the school board's policy requiring our students to use the restroom consistent with their biological gender violated Title IX. Or also found a violation of Title IX when the school system refused to update a transgender student's school records to list him as a male after he received an amended birth certificate from the same state, from the state doing the same. This is, this came out of the Fourth Circuit when we went to the law conferences. This, this was a hot topic with them. That school board and that school system paid a pretty hefty settlement in this case when they did not adhere to allowing the student to use the other bathroom.
And they would be allowed to use the bathroom with folks that were born of that gender that didn't change their identity at the same time?
If they choose to and not use the other facilities that we have offered.
Oh, we would offer other facilities?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So that would be our first, you know, in talking with a student and counseling them, we would offer them alternatives to consider first. But if they reject those and they really want to use that bathroom that with the gender they identify with, we have to let them.
And what if we have other students that are uncomfortable? What do we do for them?
We could offer them the same, the alternate.
Is that age limit our policy, or is that part of the law, the sixteen? I mean, I just...
That was, that is information that we got from our attorney.
That's recommended, or can we change it to eighteen?
It has to do with North Carolina and the legal, what they consider the legal age. So again, we, we go through and provide a lot of counseling. The school counselor would provide counseling with that and really encourage the student to share the information with their parent, whether it's sharing the information on their own, or whether we invite the parent in and assist the student, you know, the counselor being present and assist the student. And we have had a few cases and of students who are dealing with that gender identity. And I'm not aware of any of them that the parents don't know. All the ones that I'm aware of, the parents have been heavily involved in conversations. So we haven't had to go down that road yet.
Yeah, I just, that's, that is kind of concerning to think of your 16-year-old going in there and making, to me, you know, think that they're making these changes, and I could not even be aware of it, or the parent couldn't be aware of it. But you said that was a North Carolina law that we have to have, the sixteen. That's not something...
Well, she said she talked to the lawyer about it.
That's what they, they're expecting.
If it's recommended, we could change it to eighteen, correct?
Let me go back. I have the email, the written information that you provided. Let me go back and see exactly how you worded it.
Yeah, so that we'll know when we have a second reading, that'd be good.
Are all of these policies posted online that we're getting ready to implement or whatever for parents to see?
Email our website.
Yeah.
Yes.
They can get there through the agenda?
Yeah, they don't have to log in. They can just click on the agenda link, and all these policies are listed. They're not labeled like confidential or anything like that. They can just click right on them.
Any questions on... Twenty-one twenty-five speaks to confidential information. And the highlight of this one adds, is to require the superintendent or designate to establish and enforce protocols for the secure handling and electronic transmission of personally identifiable information of students and employees. Sandy oversees this work. We're okay with this language. It speaks to safeguarding student records and confidentiality in general. Remote participation in board meetings clarifies that special rules in that section apply to remote meetings held during declared emergency. So this was clarifying about the access to the public, to board members, to a board meeting, and also notification to the public and access, and whether or not a board member cannot attend a meeting. It also limits that you're doing this at the last minute if a board member comes in remotely. We've been very good about advertising when things are remote and when we have them in person, and we, they just had some clarifying language around this. I know that we have, we've had some meetings where we've had people in person and outside as well.
So they must, another clock, and that means six hours prior to the meeting, is what I'm seeing. If we have, I mean, that would, I guess, be some kind of emergency situation, but still.
That doesn't...
And that's basically so that we can vote. If we just can't be here, then we just can't be here.
That's correct. There were some issues across the state with votes and board meetings, and virtual and in-person.
How about your laws?
We actually held off, there was a curriculum development piece in here that we held off as the state budget went through. So we're on thirty, thirty-two twenty-five, which is technology responsible use. This is lengthy, strongly recommended. Eliminates the designation of the use of school technology resources as a privilege given now pervasive and sometimes unavoidable use of tech throughout the school program. So they're saying that technology is not a privilege, it's, it has to be accessible.
I have a question. It says in here, "All students must be trained about appropriate online behavior as provided in policy thirty-two twenty-six, internet safety." Who does that? Who monitors that?
Then it would be okay if you could speak to that?
Sure. So the teachers all have an obligation to teach some form of digital citizenship. We are in the process of trying to normalize, you know, who does which part and which are kind of non-dishable that need to be revisited every year. The state does give you some guidelines to do that, and, and we're working through that process to make sure that all kids get, get that training as is appropriate for their age.
Well, who actually monitors that, Sandy?
I don't know. That'd be mine.
So you vote every teacher to make sure that...
I don't know yet. We're working on it.
At the building level, principals make sure teachers walk through the required rules. There is some interesting language in here. Except in limited circumstances, prohibited students from caption or sharing audio, video, or photos of identifiable students or employees without their consent and the consent of the principal. We run into this frequently, and sometimes parents do not understand why this is not okay. And we probably have a case like this every few weeks, unfortunately, where we have inappropriate pictures or different things going to share.
Dr. Luce, Ms. Reynolds did make a recommendation on page three of the policy under "users must respect the privacy of others." Chat rooms is mentioned in there, but that is not something that we support, the use of chat rooms. So she would recommend striking that language, the use of chat rooms, because we, you know, we have taken away the use of Google Chat for student use, and so we don't really support any use of chat rooms that we can't monitor. So she did recommend striking that. And then on item number twenty-two, she asked, "We are making some changes to our network." So as we all know, students bring their cell phones and their personal devices with them to school. We will now have a guest network that personal devices will be able to access, but not through the school, our standard, for any schools, secure network. So we would add the language where it says, "on the school guest network," instead of just the school network, because there will be a separate guest network in there. So we'll, I'll ask Ms. Vett to make those changes in round two of the policy, if that works for everybody.
So who's going to be guests, Wi-Fi in the schools?
There already is a guest net...
Or middle school and high school.
If you pull up your phone right now, you probably see it says CCS guest network. So we're trying to be able to separate those things out. One, because of traffic right now, I can't remember, Ms. Reynolds gave us statistics.
So currently, we have historically just had a flat network that was just CCS Wi-Fi, and it was open to anybody, which gave everybody the same access. Just to give an example, we ran a scan at high school, we had like 1,100 kids there just spitballing it. We had over 3,000 devices connected to a Wi-Fi which bogs down the system dramatically. So, you know, if you go to McDonald's, you're going to see guest, or a hotel, you're going to see the guest network that you can't get into without the regular one, without a password. So we're in the process of transitioning over to the CCS Wi-Fi, which will be for our district devices, and CCS guest, which anybody can connect to but has limited...
What kind of security does that have?
Sorry?
Security?
For the guest network? The same thing, they, they still have to authenticate through Zscaler. It's not open access. They have limited broadband. It's just, we control more of what they have access to. It's a smaller lane on the broadband, and so district devices would have the majority of broadband access. Everything is still filtered.
As we all know, this probably started at one page. We're now at nine on the technology use, and we're learning every day.
On page five, the parental consent, is there striking that?
They actually moved it.
Okay.
So if you go to, because I was concerned when I read through it the first time, too, if you go to page eight, it looked like they, they consolidated the employee, the employee will, and the parents will get consent, and the employees and students will sign agreements. That looks like it's all now in that section, is the way I took it.
On page seven, where it talks about employees and how they cannot use their personal websites to communicate with students, is that like saying they can't be friends on Facebook?
So it is recommended that district staff members use approved district modes of communication when dealing with students, and keep personal, personal. So we have methods of ways within the district that they can communicate with them, but they're recommending that other personal, things that you would use on your personal with your family, your friends, or whatever, that they would keep that separate.
And that's to communicate with. I think that's the important part. So I shouldn't be sending a message through Facebook Messenger, "Do your homework tonight." I should send an email. I should send it through Google Classroom. I should send it through Class Dojo. That's, that's what I think that's speaking to, is that direct communication to say, "Do this, do that, do whatever."
But it's okay to be friends?
I don't think it just says that that's not something, you know, made in there. Again, we strongly encourage folks to consider those activities, but it's not. That's, this is about communicating directly with them.
Testing and assessment. It adds the word intervention, and this is tied into the statewide letter training. This is a term that educators use frequently, and this was added in as, as formal language. It's going to tie in with some reading material later on. Student promotion and accountability. These are all strongly recommended. I don't know how we can, we already, we must offer reading camps. We are, it talks about an individual reading plan for each student. This is going to come through the state board. It is, they're calling it the IRPs, Individual Reading Plan, Speaks to Reading Camps, Reading Plan, Digital Children's Reading Initiative, and Approval of a Literacy Intervention Plan. We are working on all of these things already. We already offer reading camps required by law. We, I would argue that we already have individual reading plans largely in place. This is just formalizing the process. And the approval of a literacy intervention plan, we're working on that this year, with what our plan is going to look like. This is a major portion of our work, is to make sure that our students are reading at grade level by grade three. Therefore, this is strongly recommended. We're, the state's trying to also enforce a letters training, which we will not be implementing this school year. We are the principals and K-three staff cheer. And we sent that out because we were slated to start that in January, but we were able to push that back till next year.
So this is taking out who we're going to serve as far as what grades? And then it also mentions that we should offer fee-based reading camp opportunities, I guess, for students.
To the extent resources permit, that's a, the board will offer fee-based reading camp opportunities. We are always able to serve. We fortunately have been able to serve all the kids that we could handle.
So we'll still be looking at first, second, and third grade, basically?
Because that's in state law. So the state, and that's where I think that, where it strikes that out in the policy, it says who are entitled to this intervention under state law. So I think that's explicitly in there in the law.
The reading part, we'll get further clarification as we move forward with the reading, with the letters training and so on. Graduation requirements. I think the biggest one coming here would be to just change terminology from middle school to prior to grade nine, when a student may earn credit for high school graduation. It also updates the graduation tables. Bill, does not have your book on, man.
I know. I still think that's one of the most ridiculous things we do in the state. We require four years of math, even the upper level math for kids that are taking tech ed. How many drop out a year per night?
Too many.
Too many.
We need to come up with exactly...
All you have to do is go by. Any of these developments, especially up north, our kids, if they had a vocational education or tech ed, you know, curriculum, they could work in heating, air conditioning, plumbing, you know, construction, give them a meaningful living, but yet the state is driving them away.
Some of the helpers in those trades are making $100,000.
Yeah.
But, but we need to come up with exactly what we want. We met with Senator Steinberg during the pandemic, and he said, "Write up what you want." So we need to work on that.
We need to get the state board of that and the legislature, because part of it overlaps...
They have to have graduation. We have to have more than a track.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and that's...
And they did away, the state did away with the vocational education track back in, what was it, 2010?
Virginia has five.
It was offered to the class of 2010, because I remember my son having that option.
All right, then they did away with it in 2001, I suppose, right there?
Well, he started in '06 at the high school. It was offered then.
Oh, it was offered for years.
Up until...
Yeah, up until...
It was part of the ESEA requirements when we submitted, North Carolina submitted. Virginia was exempt, because they already had a very robust testing program in place. And they never really required falling in line with No Child Left Gown and some other pieces, because their testing program already established, it passed the standard that the federal government had put forward. So Virginia is an outlier among states in that they did not have to comply with those pieces, thus being able to offer multiple tracks.
We talked about it for many, many years. So what do we need to do to fit in a play?
When North Carolina submits for another, for the next, next round, that's when that could occur. That's been some of the feedback we've gotten from the state representatives as well. They only bring that up when it's time for renewal.
So we really can't do anything, like you said, until we get a diploma track that allows...
Because we're now, if we did what should be done, and the kids take, like, capital rap.
We're doing it, but we're, we're being penalized for it.
We need to lobby for it prior to. We can't wait till the final hour and then try to pitch through. We've got to start, so that then when they get... pitch through, we've got to start, so that then, when they get ready, they'll be aware of it, the state board, and Bobby and our other representatives.
So, on our last conversation with Representative Hannig, he had a meeting with the state board, and Catherine Truitt, who was coming in, new as the state board, as the state superintendent, excuse me, and in that last conversation, it was noted that graduation requirements are up for review next year, and so that this is a discussion that is, again, tossed around.
We just need to remind them, I guess, yeah.
You know, it's so hard, because everybody says the same thing, and in every meeting we've been in, everybody says, we agree, we agree, we agree, and then nothing happens.
But we need something other than, whether it be verbal commi- uh, communication, email communication, we need something that states that we have put this in play, and a response from them, that they will, this is what they're gonna do, and these are the dates that it needs to be done by, because if, if not, this is just gonna go round and round for another ten years. So, we have to put some kind of deadlines on it, and so that it'll be implemented for the next session.
Yeah, we've done that, we've done that, that means, we've been to Raleigh.
Okay, well then, what, what do we do?
So, I asked Bobby the last time, when we, when he had conversation about graduation requirements coming up, and he's like, you know, Catherine spoke to, you know, task force coming together, I said, we, I need, I need, I need to be on that task force, I need somebody to come up there and articulate what we're seeing, and I don't know how that happens, but I just begged, basically, to say, get somebody from here to go on there and be on that task force, so that we can speak to, really at ground level. I don't know how it's not, I do know, and I, and that's for another discussion, it's politics at its best, and it's purse strings at its best about, are we sending kids college-ready? And who holds, you know, the lobbying cards the most up there when they're talking about graduation requirements, and making sure kids are college-ready? You know, the colleges and universities are the advocates that have pushed this through, and have caused this to be in place, because they need kids coming to them. They don't get funded for remedial courses, you have to keep in mind, colleges don't get funded for remedial courses, and the kids are enrolled. So, you know, they think that by adding these additional requirements, and I'm not saying it's not always a good thing for certain kids, it's just not a one-size-fits-all model, and that's what we have to continue to articulate. If we're really about personalizing education for all kids, then that means it's not the same for you than it is for me. And right now, it's the same for Caden than it is Emerson, and they're two totally different students, one with special needs and one with not, and that is not okay.
And that's, we need you to say, exactly what you just said to them, because I don't think they understand.
It's gonna be my next career, lucky.
You talk, you know, we all talk about it, and it sounds great, and they, they say, okay, yeah, we'll do that, that sounds good, and let's get together, it never happens.
It, it really doesn't make sense, as much as they stress at the lower level to teach where the child is, and then we get up there and we're one-size-fits-all.
And as high school principals, we come to catch all, it has to fit everybody through the same rattle hole to get out of graduation, and to graduate, and then that's why we do have kids that drop out, to Bill's point, because they don't fit that hole, and it's not okay. And the argument about rigor is a lost argument, because that technical math that some of those kids didn't, I couldn't do, but they can, and I can handle the trick, because it makes sense in my brain, and I work that way, so it's different for every kid. And so, I think we just, we just have to continue to push that, if we're really about doing what's best for kids, then there's not a one-size-fits-all model.
So, why did they do away with it in two thousand ten?
Because what Matt said, we went, we, we, I tease, and I sell, I say things like, we sold our soul, but we accepted federal dollars for race to the top, and with that, we had to put accountability measures in place that nobody really thought through, and we now kind of reap the.
Well, we only give this much federal dollars, it's very few.
Yeah, but we couldn't survive without them either.
Especially not in two thousand ten.
We talked about statewide federal dollars.
But parents need to be educated on this too, and they need to start calling and making some noise to the parent representatives, because, I mean, they're the ones who, if you're saying it's, you know, so political, that is what gets their attention, and I mean, I know I can certainly do my best, or, you know, talk to parents.
I think what would get their attention, and a lot of people are not aware of, is that a budget, a budget has not been passed.
Oh, it has now.
Well, now, I know, but.
Three years.
That's what I'm seeing.
Most people don't realize.
Nobody knows that. They think everything's going along, and we're good, and.
Well, yeah, because their kids are going to school, everything.
Yeah, I mean.
Sorry, sorry.
I don't, I'm a little tense right now.
Yeah, yeah. No, I appreciate all that input that you gave, and I think anyone else probably doesn't. So, we just need to contact Bobby and tell him to make sure that you're on that task force.
Bill stays on it, I stay on it.
We need to contact all of the contacts we have in the.
We put together good notes, I'm gonna find this again, I put like, everything with us at that level, the board points, and they like what we had, it's time to revisit it again.
One last thing, all you have to do is drive around to the different developments, and the construction workers, probably seventy-five percent of licensed places are from Virginia.
Yeah, that's true.
It could be from North Carolina, we had a.
And right here, they're right here from this side.
Forty fifty is children of military families. It just adds a few sections, these are recommended, it also speaks to a grievance, a solution for military families. We tend to do our best with our military families, given the challenges that they face when it comes to transporting students and so on. Divisal or residence requirements, forty-one twenty, this is required. It also adds a subsection for military families to enroll online and not be, not be present to conduct that at all. Forty-one fifty-two, we actually held out, we, we held out the student assignment, forty-one fifty, given, we wanna make sure that any language regarding student assignment continues to allow us the freedom to deny requests to attend different schools based on enrollment. We do not wanna put ourselves in a position where we are forced to put more kids in a school that's already backed out, so we'll come back to that one. Forty-one fifty-two, unsafe school choice transfer, we're fine with that, there's some updated legal references, that does not apply to Carrolltown County, and we're fortunate to have safe schools. Forty-three hundred, student behavior policies. I wanted to bring this particular one to your attention, as it adds language that, stating that students will not be disciplined for constitutionally protected behavior, and encouraging school officials to consult with senior administrators before regulating student expression that may be protected by the First Amendment to the U.S. Constitution. So, the background on this case was a girl tried out for the varsity cheerleading squad, she did not make the varsity cheerleading squad, and in true fashion, she took to Facebook to defame the school, used vulgar profanities, and say a lot of ugly things. The school suspended her for that, and in an American way, she went out and got a lawyer. The lawyer then sued for her freedom of speech, and the court found in favor that the girl should not have been suspended, despite the vulgarities and the comments online. So, that being said, we are still able to discipline students from behavior outside of school when it disrupts school. But there's a fine line between you're offended by what a student said outside of school, and disrupting school when they get there. The language in here is the attempt to clarify that, this would, I'm looking at Dr. Dorman and Ms. Fallon, that would, this would affect them most likely, and very likely in the middle school, that they haven't figured out freedom of speech yet, they're figuring themselves out, so.
But their parents have.
But their parents have.
And they're the ones that paid for the lawyer.
That's correct.
Does it matter if they posted it, or during the school hours, or if they are posting something that they recorded at school, does that go in, so that it does, whether they're going home, being upset, and posting it?
I think this, again, just, what the court is attempting to, this is, from what, going through, listen to how this was interpreted, the court is attempting to make sure that schools don't overreach on their discipline when it's unnecessary, despite the fact that that was the awful case, and they don't understand how, and she was, she was removed from the cheerleading squad as well, for that language, and then she, she won.
I have a question under Part B, Communication Policies. In red on the second page, it says, each school will create a student behavior management plan that is consistent with the law, board policies, and the code of student conduct. I think it needs to be a little more specific, because I think all our elementary schools should have a consistent policy, to middle schools, a consistent policy, and high schools, a consistent policy, so it's not different from school to school.
Much like what we're doing with the curriculum, we want the teaching to be the same, so I agree, the discipline should be the same, elementary, amongst our elementary.
So, we have begun some work.
Yeah, we have, so our six-eight, our two-mill schools have worked on that this past summer, and have a common kind of framework that they've been using. We researched other schools' codes of conduct to get some consensus on there. We did not reach down to K-five yet, it's, you know, I mean, it is a different beast, I have to say, not that it doesn't have its own challenges, and some behavior challenges as well there, but our six-eight, and then nine-twelve, I mean, they're two very different schools, so it does look a little bit different with the on-campus, off-campus, there's some things that have to be different, with the number of students who are off-campus at Nap and at Tennessee away, and what that looks like, but we can certainly continue to work towards, which we have been, six-eight, nine-twelve being consistent policies, as far as, if this behavior happens, this is the range of consequences that should automatically fall in that category.
Student dress code. Fairly short policy, however. The word nondiscriminatory, nondiscriminatory dress code adopted and publicized by the school, clarifies that any dress code adopted by a school must be nondiscriminatory. Appeals for the Fourth Circuit held that school dress codes that impose different requirements for male and female students can be challenged under Title IX. School systems that require different dress or grooming standards for male and female students are strongly encouraged to review their dress codes. To simplify with this, from what I have read, and what in presentations I've seen, the simplification of this is that if spaghetti straps are not allowed permissible for a female student, that if I wanted to come to school in spaghetti straps, then I would not be allowed to do that either. And so, it's trying to make sure that it is not, get that image out of your head. The attempt is being made to make sure that the dress code is, is fairly applied to both, that not generally applied more stringently to female students than male students.
So, it's more about keeping it fair, I think when parents go through this, they're thinking about what they can wear, like what's appropriate and what's not, but this is more about, that's more. But that's in our student handbook, is it not, Dr. Dorman?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Because I think I read something last, a couple weeks ago, in one of your weekly things that you wanted, and the.
Stakeholders.
Stay close to the dress code.
Which are very informative.
Yes, we appreciate it. Yeah, we do.
I look forward to reading it every week.
Attendance. This speaks to the attendance procedures for remote instruction. We have worked through this significantly, we feel like we have been, we're in a good place with how we take attendance, if we ever have to go remote again, and when we do go remote, we are, we're fine with this language in here.
On page three, under makeup work, is where we'll add the administrative guidelines that we've spoken to, and we've been working through with our teachers. Dr. Luce does have an advisory meeting scheduled coming up in early December, with the hopes that we can have those implemented at the start of the new semester moving forward. But they will be attached, and we'll add that policy under makeup work for those administrative guidelines.
And we talked a lot the last time about notes, and I see that it is a part of the excused absences on Item C, a written excuse signed by a parent or guardian must be presented to the student's teacher within two days, so we're keeping that in there?
It's always been our policy, I don't know that we always are so tough to two days, sometimes they come a little bit after that, I think as teachers, we're probably the first ones with our kids, sending the notes with them, I'm always bad about it.
Boy, email has made it much better.
Absolutely, and Dojo, really, and truthfully, I think a lot of them get them through Dojo too, just as easily.
Ultimately, we have attendance problems, our attendance officers and social workers, they'll follow up, and sometimes parents will be late on getting their notes, and then sometimes it's a ruse, but they'll work with those parents, even if it's outside of the two-day window. Student records. This is required, and recommended.
We have to give out the email address? We have to do that, give out the email address to the military recruiters?
Must be provided upon request.
And this is a required thing?
It's required.
Unless the parents opt out.
Under the National Defense Authorization Act, Section 521, and codified in USS.
I think they used to do it in high school, didn't they, they borrowed my bear, you signed it.
Student surveys. I can, and Virginia can attest to this, we do review our surveys, if we are giving any student surveys, I don't know if you have seen the one survey that the state had at, that has popped up in other places, it was fairly intrusive, it was an at-risk survey of youth, and so we try to do our best to make sure any student surveyed are screened, and appropriate for the age level, that they would be surveyed. It also gets into the statutory rules regarding collection, disclosure, or personal student information, and the purpose of marketing and selling that information. So, people will try to, marketers will try to get in the building and gather student information. Surveys should not be given out by teachers without it being cleared and permitted.
And again, I think it's important to note that it gives parents the option to opt out if any survey is.
In some surveys, we will not even bring to the table. Visitors to school. Removes the temporary restriction that prohibited nonessential visitors to the schools, we'll actually see what that does. And fifty twenty-two speaks to registered sex offenders. We use Lobby Guard to check, that's one of our stops, along with our school secretary do a great job of checking at Powers School regarding any flags on students at the elementary level. You're okay with this language?
I find it interesting that this is only recommended.
Yeah, it's taken to Chairman Etheridge, out of all of these, there were only six that are required, and two of those was a legal reference requirement, so.
When we reviewed them initially, that's why we, we get a big stop right here, because it goes on for several more pages, we're really trying not to bring policy forth that even, if it's strongly recommended, we look at each one, we're not trying to bring policy forth that's gonna create and bind us into further restrictive actions. But, as Vettel said, when she started school policy, we get a tiny update every, it was small, and now we're getting packets like this, and it's tough to keep up with.
And it's tough for people to remember what the policies are, I mean, whether it be employees, or parents, or students.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Luce. Any questions from the board members? Any questions from, from staff?
Any questions from, from staff? Okay, well, with, with that being said, let's, uh, close the work session. And for those of you that are not lucky enough to be attending the 6:30 meeting, I wish you a very happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.